All right.
Eric and Linda.
I want to welcome everybody to the August 27th, 2024 regular town council meeting. Time called for 6:00 PM. It's approximately 6:10 PM. Welcome, everybody. If everyone could please, first of all, like to call the meeting to order. Meeting call to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Einstein. He was on Zoom. Councilmember Mendel.
Here.
Councilmember Luskin.
Here.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Excellent. If everyone could please rise and Chief Rudy Habello, if you could please lead us to the pledge, would appreciate it.
Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Once again, I want to welcome everybody. I can't believe it's pretty much almost September already, and it's a new fiscal year for the town of Golden Beach. Very, very exciting. First on the agenda is presentations. We have three. First, I want to bring up the resident ID cards. Who's going to speak on that? Town manager or... Oh. Sergeant Bautista, welcome. The dog bites. Be careful.
Good evening. Oh, wow. Sergeant Joseph Bautista from Golden Beach Police Department. I'm going to be in charge of handling the ID cards for the residents. Just to let you know, we have a packet in the front. It's just weird that they're behind me. Sorry. Just want you guys to know that all you guys got to do is fill out a packet that was emailed to all the residents. Once you do that, also email photos from the, any face photos, kind of like a passport photos, digital. That way, we can implement into IDs and they can look good. If you send me a picture with your ID, it's not going to, it's not going to come out very well for the IDs. Give us about a five to 10 business days. We're going to try to also on Fridays, go out and, and give the, go to the residence house and drop off the IDs for your convenience. Also, for your convenience, we're also switching all the, we're cleaning up the system, all for the services. Going to be able to do the tents, I'm sorry, the tennis courts, the bathrooms in the pavilion, and the pavilion and the predensious gates. Thank you.
Thank you. Residents, I can't urge you enough. You need the ID cards. You know, it's an added protective for security for the town of Golden Beach. You need, you're going to need them to use the restrooms at the beach pavilion. You're going to need to use them for the gates. You're going to need to use them for the tennis courts, for the pickleball courts. You need to get, use them. And also, when you go to the beach, you're going to have to bring them. So it's an added layer of protection for the residents, and it's, everyone needs to get one. So I urge you to do that.
If you do not update your resident ID card, know that there will come a point where your transponder will no longer open the vehicular gate. So get it done, or just know that you will be having delays at the entrance gate. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I want to introduce a special new addition to the Golden Beach Police Department and really to the residents. Bowie is our new Golden Beach service dog. And Detective Villa, if you want to get up and explain and tell us a little about... So we've really beefed up security. This is our new canine. Can you explain a little to the residents, the program and what we're doing?
Yes. Hi, how you doing? Name's Pete Villa. I'm the president of the FOP. I've been with Golden Beach for 17 years. Thank you for this great home. Been a cop 27 years. I've been to a lot of critical incident situations where officers need help. And then I came with the idea with the town manager and the chief, if I can get something to get back to the city or town and officers, and it was a therapy dog. A lot of times, people don't want to talk to other people and just want to see a man's best friend, and he or she understands us better than we do. They don't critique us. They don't say no. So we, we got Bowie from Dog Rescue Service. They have 750 dogs. None of them got euthanized. Goes through a battery or training. People with disabilities, autism, vets, disabilities, mental health. So he went to school for three months. He passed everything, and then he became an added member to our police department. So.
Bowie, we want to welcome you. I'm sorry, town manager. Go on.
You know, it's very important for our residents to, to, to recognize. So a couple of years back, our residents came to us and said, look, mental illness is a growing concern in our community. Children on the spectrum, our community is changing, the dynamics of our community is changing. And at the time, there was one of our residents who held an event at her private home. You know, we listened to our residents in terms of how our community is evolving and changing. So when Detective Villa came to me and said, you know, we really want to look at adding and augmenting our staff by bringing in an animal, an emotional support canine, it really was very confused, right? So canines are supposed to hunt down bad people. And so now we have an instrument that could help our residents and our employees and those individuals that come to our community who may be timid or need support. And so we embrace what our residents tell us. More importantly, I want to just thank Rudy and Gio, the captain and the chief, and Detective Villa for making this happen. Just, we're one of very few agencies in the tri-county area, so Palm Beach, Broward, and Dade, to take on this absolutely needed resource to our team. And so thank you for that. And Bowie, you know that I don't like animals, but you've kissed me twice, so you're lucky.
How old is Bowie?
13 months. 13 months, yeah.
Well, Detective, I commend you for taking on this responsibility because it's really a great addition to, for Golden Beach. And I know everyone's going to love Bowie, and Bowie's going to love Golden Beach, so.
And thank you for letting us do this for the community.
Our pleasure.
Thank you so much.
The video was really very nice also that came out. Very.
Thank you. One more presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Rudy Habello. He's going to give us a little update on what the police department has been doing.
Mayor, council members, town manager. Town attorney, dear residents, I got to try to recap what we are presently, presently having placed to assure the safety of our residents and visitors. To our residents, in many ways, the mayor, the town manager, and myself are proactively engaged in meetings and brainstorming in, in an effort to bring new innovative ideas to put into practice in order to enhance the safety capabilities of the town. Let's start by talking about manpower. Slowly but surely through the years, we have increased staffing. When I first started back in 2011, we had like 19 full-timers. With the part-timers, we went up to 24. Right now, we have 32 law enforcement officers working for Golden Beach. Some of them have been reassigned where we need them the most, which is the midnight shift. Also, in order to increase staffing, we have brought back the detached officers to work patrol assignments. We are proactively doing high visibilities inside the town. And I'm sure that you have noticed that as officers patrol inside the town, they go with the lights on. And we are also using the public service aid to patrol inside the town. Moreover, we have the exit detail, which I'm sure you're, you're familiar with that, where we place an officer at the strand, at the exit road, from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. We do that not only to deter crime, but as the cars come out, we try to identify who's driving the car to prevent cars being stolen. We are doing constant, constant traffic enforcement detail, and as of late, we have been doing it at night. We are getting a new motorcycle to increase that effort. I have to add, we have the Pete Villa's dog, but we also have now a canine bomb dog, which has become the envy of many police departments. We have been receiving calls from other police departments, including the Secret Service, to utilize the dog. I think that you needed to know that. When it comes to high visibility, and I don't know if you have noticed, as of late, we have hosted and invited many police agencies to come and train in town. And we're talking about Miami Dade and Broward as well. This helped not only train our officers, but it helps police presence in town. When it comes to the CCTV cameras, the installation of the new poles and new lenses is pretty much ongoing and in full speed. At the end, we will have over 200 lenses in town with high definition performance. Let me give you an example. So in the beach, we used to have three pole stations. Now we're going to have 12. In the intercoastal, we used to have one at the police boat. Now we're going to have 12. At A1A, we got, we used to have three. Now we're going to have 12, just to give you an example. Besides our Marine Patrol regular weekly assignments, as of late, we have been hosting multi-agency Marine Patrol operations that have produced excellent, excellent results and reviews. The next one, so just to let you know, the next one is scheduled for Labor Day weekend. We're going to be out there, and many others. Even though the police department do nine beach runs a day, the town will be installing retractable gates on the beach to pretty much, in, in the attempt to minimize pedestrian entry into the town at night on the beachside. So that will help the police department after hours and will assist us in containing the flow of pedestrian traffic on the beach at night. Now, today, if approved by the council, we're getting a drone to assist, to assist us, to patrol on the air, the outside perimeter of the town. And I want to tell you and reassure you that this is only to do the public areas, just to go around the town. And the reason for this is not only high visibility, but it, it would help us pretty much, if we, if the drone captured some activities, irregular activities, we can dispatch unit, and the drone will be there, right there on the scene. And most important and to end, we have a very strong partnership with all neighboring law enforcement agencies, and that will assist us in a minute with a phone call. You needed to know that.
Mayor, if I could just augment.
Thank you, Chief. I'm sorry, go on.
Chief, you know, it's been remarkable to have you as part of our team for the last 14 years, and I, and I cannot have picked a better chief to join us with, with the mayor. You know, this summer, we did a lot to enhance our security. And, you know, there's, there's some things that we are going to push the envelope on. The most important thing that our residents need to know is that we don't sit back on our laurels and just say, we've got a great team. We continue to expand on all of our programs, make sure that we have the best trained agency in South Florida. We've now become a trainer of trainers. If you were here this summer, you would have seen over 17 agencies come to our community and train in Golden Beach. How is a city of only 380 houses training police departments of over 800 men and women who serve their agencies? Some of the things that we're doing, and this is important for our residents to understand. So starting as soon as they're finished being constructed, which is hopefully at the end of the week, we will have two new gates on the north and south side of town, asking people to traverse on Ocean Boulevard, not on the sand. From 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, our beaches will be closed and you cannot traverse. If you're a resident, clearly you can go out to your backyard. What we're trying to do is minimize the foot traffic on Ocean itself. The drone that the chief mentioned is an automatic drone that does automatic patrols, letting us know when we see things. So we continue to expand and stay current in our policing efforts. And I just want to thank Chief Habello, Captain Diaz, and Lieutenant Perez for all of the hard work, and of course, the 30 men and women who serve in our police department. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Before we move on, I want to welcome Stephanie Vega from the Miami Dade Commissioner of Ethics and Public Trust. Welcome to Golden Beach. Would you like to say anything? Didn't mean to put you on the spot. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Next on the agenda, motion to set agenda, additions, deletions, removal of items from the consent agenda or changes to the agenda. I have none. Counsel? None. Staff administration?
Mayor, we'd like to add Resolution Number 2964 dot 24. An item that's added at the last minute is appointing a member to the pension board.
All in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Item is added to the town agenda for this evening. Moving on to good and welfare. Do we have people signed up for good and welfare? I believe we do. Lisette, if you could pull the list. Ms. Islandberg?
Hello, everyone. I'm Natalie. And so on the ongoing issue of the South Gate, I just want to bring to everyone's attention that I have lived in Golden Beach at the south end for 11 years, and I have experienced the South Gate opened and the South Gate closed. While the South Gate was closed, it never even occurred to me that we needed that exit. For the majority of Golden Beach's existence, there was no South Gate, and in turn, no complaints regarding that matter. Having said that, I literally timed how long it would take me to get from my house to the Lehman Causeway on a busy time of the day, and it took me three extra minutes. That's it. I feel that what many here are failing to see is that we will be building amenities that cater to our young children in an area that will be likely filled with many pedestrians. It is dangerous and a liability to have continuous traffic passing through. It is a real safety concern. Plus, it is my understanding that should an emergency arise, the South Gate, similarly to the North Gate, will open. Furthermore, I have spoken to other neighbors that live in the south area near me, and I have, and they fully support my view. And on that note, I actually want to take this opportunity to thank the mayor, the town manager, and council for their effort and hard work to improve our community and to be able to take into account what is in the best interest of the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Terry Sun?
I'm not here pro or con. I'm here on South, I'm sorry. 264 South Parkway is my address. Oh, you don't need it? Okay. I'm also talking about South Gate. I don't have a pro or a con. I'm just listening to what a lot of people are saying in the chat. We would like something, and I'll give you an example. This morning, and I spoke with the town manager, there was a garbage, not a garbage truck, there was a lawn manufacturing people, like there were two cars there. There was a police officer across the street that did not ask them to move. And not even a half a mile down, there was a cement truck bringing in either cement or fill, I don't know, but it was a huge like dump truck thing. It was an extra five minutes. Not a big deal. But if we had, the manager and I had a discussion that perhaps either from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, when people are trying to get to work and it's really busy, we could open the South Gate. And if not that, we would have the police make sure that nobody would do construction along A1A that would back up traffic. The other day, it took me an extra 15 minutes to get from the Strand to William Lehman because there was a garbage truck and there were two construction trucks there. It's just courtesy. So if we could do something along those lines, the easement, from what I understand, Mr. Attorney, says that we can use it for buses. Well, school buses obviously can't go back and forth there anymore for whatever reason. 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning would make life so much easier for a lot of people here. I understand that it may be bad for Natalie and her house, and I, I feel for her. But we need to do something to try and alleviate the traffic along A1A. And this is about, there are 54 people in the chat that have asked me to speak tonight, which is why I am here. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisette, anyone else for good and welfare?
I do have some questions in the Zoom.
Questions are not good and.
Questions are not good and welfare?
Then no, nobody else.
No? Okay. Perfect. Moving right along. Next is the mayor's report. I'll keep it, try to keep it brief. Tonight, on the budget, we're going to approve the, the new mileage rate of 8.5 mils. This is our ninth, excuse me, 8.4 mils. 8.4 mils is our ninth year in a row that the mileage rate is, is staying the same. I mean, our, our asset values of the town of Golden Beach has almost reached $1.9 billion. That's affording the town to, you know, increase our, to improve our infrastructure, to make the town additionally safe, and to add amenities to, you know, for the residents of Golden Beach. And I have my hats off to Maria in the Finance Department and the town manager for putting together a great budget again this year, and very, very excited to present it next council meeting to go over the budget. But also, we were able to receive about $850,000 from Tallahassee. Town manager and I went up to Tallahassee during session, and with the help of our state senators and our, our House of Representatives and the governor, we were awarded $850,000 to help for the infrastructure of the new wellness center. So hats off to Golden Beach for that. The wellness center is moving along. Tonight, we're going to receive a presentation on the presentation that was presented today at around 11 o'clock today. It was participated by a good amount of residents, and their input was very, very much appreciated. And just like tonight, your input is much appreciated, and we can answer any questions at that time regarding that. The town is working on many, many projects. The town manager is going to go over it under his report. The tennis court and the pickleball courts would have been completed about two weeks ago if it wasn't for the weather. It seems like every morning or afternoon it rains. The tennis people can't obviously work on the courts if it, unless it's 100% dry. So hopefully, if we get good weather over the next three to four weeks, the, the courts will be done. If you look out on the balcony, you can see that they're all painted, the lights are up, the nets aren't in, and the, the 100% of the fences are not in. But we're very, very close, and we're very, very excited about that. We're like, to reiterate, we're going to have two pickleball courts, three tennis courts. So I know a lot of residents have been very, very patient, but it's going to come, and we're very, very excited about it. Quick little note, still in hurricane season. In fact, we're beginning the peak of hurricane season. I can't urge the residents enough to be prepared, especially if you go away for a week. As everyone knows, a hurricane could come out of the Atlantic overnight, and four days later, you know, be a threat to the South Florida coast. So you need to be prepared. School has started, as everyone knows, or is about to start. I urge everyone, especially driving down Golden Beach Drive, to not be on their cell phone, to go slow and to pay attention. Kids walk, they don't look across the street. A car could come, and unfortunately, an accident could occur. So please, please be careful, especially in the morning between 7:00 and 9:00, and also in the afternoon between 2:00 and 5:00. The council and I and the administration, our top priority, as the chief went over the report and the town manager reiterated, security is our top priority of Golden Beach. Even in our budget this year, you'll see, it's security, security, security. There's been call boxes already added. We're going to have a total of 11 call boxes throughout town. You could see one right on the corner here. It's an added amenity for security. God forbid, there's an incident, you press the call button, it automatically goes to the guardhouse. And also, there's a camera there, and it notifies the police immediately. So that's a big, big addition for the Golden Beach. The camera project, as the town manager mentioned, is moving along. And as the chief mentioned, we're going to have over 200 eyes in Golden Beach once the cameras are all installed. We're adding the gates, which was a brilliant idea. I commend the town manager for coming up for it. On the north side and the south side, that will be deployed after sunset that will deter people from walking along the coast at night. And I think that's a big deterrent, and it's a great added security, especially mainly for the beach residents, which is very, very important. The drone, we're going to go over tonight, is a great addition. When the chief and the town manager explain what it can do, it's done automatically. It's a great addition to the police department. God forbid, someone comes along on the beach or within town, will be alerted immediately. We'll know, we'll have it on video, and the police department will be notified immediately, and we can resolve a situation before it even occurs. And I think that's a great addition. I commend the police department and the chief for doing a phenomenal job. We're a town that's very proactive instead of reactive. Everything that we're doing is being proactive before an incident occurs. The chief, I commend you. Rudy, the command staff, everyone has done a great job. And I know you guys do an extra mile, and it's not an easy job. And my hats go off to you guys because not only is it not a safe job, but it's also a pain in the neck job. And you keep the town safe, and I commend you and the police officers doing a great job. The, I just want to make a comment on the South Gate being closed. Just so everyone knows, it's not like we threw this at you overnight. We've been talking about closing the South Gate for over a year. And I understand people get spoiled because people can exit the gate and it saves them time. But if you think about it, as many of our residents said, it's very limited amount of additional time. And the people on the north side, they don't have that amenity. So why should the, not to say that the South Gate shouldn't, but why should the South residents, their life be easier, and not the north side of town? North side have no other exit. And for security purposes, we've done research after research after research to maximize the security of this town. You have one entrance and one exit. This way, you control everything. You see everything on the cameras. It makes everything safe. And also, there's less traffic, okay? And I think for people to say it's an extra three to four minutes, before you say that comment, you really need to think about it. I mean, it's like, are we that privileged that we can't drive an extra three minutes to get out of town? I understand it's a little inconvenience because we've been spoiled. But again, when the council and I and the management make a decision, it's what's best for the entire town. We do not favor the north side, the south side, the beach residents. We do everything what's best for the community. In fact, when we did the camera project, what was the best way to handle it for the community? Add cameras on the intercoastal, plus add cameras on the ocean, plus add cameras on A1A, and then add cameras on Golden Beach Drive. These are all additional and pluses for security for the entire town. We sit up here and we represent the entire town. So, you know, I, I feel bad that someone's inconvenienced because we spoiled them to open the South Gate. But again, you have to think and look at the big picture. So I'm not going to beat a dead horse. The South Gate is closing. We're not opening it. There's, there's no other option. And for security, I think the residents will really appreciate that we do what we said we're going to do. One other comment I have to make. The neighborhood chat. During the summer, I've had so many phone calls and complaints about the chat. I think it's great for what it was initially set up to do. The thing that we have to stop is misinformation. And I'll give you an example. During the summer, a boat washed the shore, Golden Beach. I was made aware of it. The town manager was aware. There were five immigrants that came on the beach. Three were caught, caught immediately. Two, I think, went down south, got away, eventually got caught. Someone was calling me and saying that there's 30 resident, 30 illegal immigrants running through town. And I was out in Colorado, and I go, I'm not aware of that, but let me check. I called the chief, I called the town manager, and it's misinformation. It wasn't true. No one even said there were 30 people running around town. There was only five. The only thing I urge the residents, if you ever have a question or concern, call the town hall. Call my, my cell number is provided to everybody. Same with everyone on the council. The town manager is available 24/7. The chief is available 24/7. I think the neighborhood chat is phenomenal for what it initially came out to be. The only, and I'm not saying, I, I love it for, it's helped a lot of residents obtain employees. The only, and I'm not saying, I love it for, it's helped a lot of residents obtain employees and get advice on, handyman, I think it's great. The only thing I ask is, don't put up information if you don't know. And if you have a question, call. There's always someone to answer and to help you out. Again, because misinformation causes panic and chaos. And this summer, I've had them all through the year, people call, and I've never commented, but this summer, I've had so many calls, people, and email and text, people telling me, hey, they got to stop with the misinformation. So I urge you that if you have any questions or concern, again, our doors are always open, and we're always available to help you guys. And we try to provide the residents with as much information as possible, okay? If there's a major situation and the residents need to be aware, we're going to put it on the 911 reverse call, and you'll get an email, a phone call. But a lot of times, it's not needed for the residents to know because it's a small minor incident, and we can't inform the residents on every little, you know, minor incident. But again, I can't urge you enough to, you have a question, a comment, you can call Councilwoman Mendel, Councilwoman Luskin, myself, you have our cell numbers, the town manager, the chief, the assistant town manager, we're always available for the community. We're here to help you guys and make your life easier. So with that, I appreciate that.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry for interrupting, sir. When we closed Good and Welfare, we never asked if there were people on Zooms, and there are people on Zoom that wish to speak.
To what?
There are people on Zoom that wish to speak during Good and Welfare. We didn't give Zoom an opportunity, so before the, before the council goes on, if we could allow the Zoom for Good and Welfare.
So finish the council comments?
I think we should go back to Good and Welfare and then go council.
Right. So yeah, so we'll go back to Good and Welfare. I'm sorry, Lisette. So anyone on Good and Welfare would like to speak?
Yes, sir, I believe there are. If there's anybody on Good and Welfare who would like to make comments, this is your opportunity to make comments.
Comments are limited to two minutes.
And again, apologize for leaving you out, did not know.
And please just state your name when you do make your comments.
Can I speak? This is Alan Bennison.
Yes, of course.
Hi. I put some comments there. I couldn't attend because I had to stay in the office, but obviously, the issue with the south gate is what it is, and we get it. And I don't, I don't think anybody is opposing the decision, the security and all that stuff. But there's two things that, that were brought up, and just to find out if something can be done to assist the morning traffic on A1A. Obviously, somebody mentioned it a second ago, that in the morning, there's always either somebody cutting the trees or trash pickup during the prime rush hour in the morning when everybody's trying to take their kids to school, or, so it gets really, really backed up, and if there's a possibility that the city could move those, you know, work inside the Golden Beach, but not deal with A1A till after rush hour, 9:00, 9:30, to kind of avoid blocking a lane, and it really gets backed up to the light. That's something that, I think that's something that could be accommodated, that I don't think it's a big issue that could help. And the other comment was, the light, when you come out of the strand, now that there's only one exit, you know, when I try to get out, I might be in a line of like 10 cars to get out. Is there a way that the timing on the light of the strand could be extended a little bit to let the flow of traffic out of Golden Bay, out of Golden Beach, to get out to A1A a lot faster? So the light is so quick that you could maybe get two cars, and there's so much traffic coming from north to south that you can't even turn right to go south? So if there's a possibility of an option to control the timing of that light during rush hours in the morning, that would allow the flow to get out of Golden Beach.
Right.
So those are my two comments, if it's possible.
Thank you, Mr. Bennison. The town manager is going to address the A1A situation, what you and Ms. Sun said in his comments, but regarding the light, I asked the manager last week to notify, it's the Department of Transportation, if we can extend the light, the timing for the light. So we're working on that, but thank you. Anyone else for Good and Welfare? Yes.
There's some people, maybe the town manager could address it now, because I'm assuming a lot of these comments.
Sure, if the council wants, so, so at the direction of the town council and the mayor, after hearing all the feedback that they received over the summer from our residents as it relates to the south gate, and the, the fact that the south gate was going to be closed, and we have been talking about the closure of the south gate for over the last 11 years in all of our newsletters, the following administrative order has been issued, and the mayor has consented to it. So here's the following order. Starting next Monday, no longer are you allowed to park on Golden Beach Drive prior to 9:00 AM in any direction. So there's no more parking on Golden Beach Drive prior to 9:00 AM. Prior to 10:00 AM, no southbound permits will be issued for pouring concrete or any construction activity or deliveries or drop offs. So no southbound, no vehicle can pull a permit to stop or close a lane going south on A1A. Also, prior to 10:00 AM, no garbage activity will be done southbound in town. So as it relates to southbound, last week, last week, the mayor directed me to San Antonio FDOT asking to extend the light at the strand during peak hours, that is, the hours of 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM exiting, and in the afternoon, again, between 5:00 and 7:00 PM. So we're going to extend the light time at the strand while the state responds to our requests. The police will be manning what we call the pickle. The pickle is what controls the light at the strand. So during peak hours, there'll be an officer who will be manning the pickle, extending the time. So again, to recapture, to ensure a more easy access to our south residents who need to go southbound, we will no longer allow parking on Golden Beach Drive prior to 9:00 AM. We will no longer allow any type of activity in the southbound lanes on Ocean Boulevard, no, no construction pours, no big deliveries, no, and in fact, the police have been instructed if they pull somebody over, take them further down the way so that we have no blocking of traffic on the southbound lanes. Now, we hope that those activities, the other rumor that needs to be clarified, we will absolutely still have a south gate for emergencies. Our streets are flooded, there's a car that's flipped over on, on, northbound on Ocean Boulevard. We will open the south gate and allow the residents to safely maneuver around the 20 public works staff members and our equipment in the public works yard to go around that area to then come out to, to the old Golden Beach Drive. So through, through Terracina to Golden Beach Drive. So the south gate will still be functional for emergency purposes, which is what our agreement with Golden Gates Estate states. So yes, if there's flooding, if there's a fire, if there, we will still have access and use of the south gate for what the agreed to agreement was, which is for emergency purposes. So the gate doesn't go away, we still have a way to get in and out of town during emergencies. We think that the four changes that we're making to our normal operations will help alleviate some of the delays that we're hearing from our residents, and that's what we will be doing to help accommodate our residents. By the way, I know that most of you are speaking specifically as it relates to vehicular activity, know that as it relates to our pedestrian activity, the, all of our pedestrians are now asked to go through the new reimagined Turtle Park to the new Sabbath friendly gate underneath the civic center that leads you to our new Sabbath sidewalk, and at the request of all of our residents and under the great direction of our mayor, because the mayor really did come up with this project, we now have a emergency call box. By the way, it is heat sensitive, so you just stand in front of it for an extended period of time, it will ring, so it's Sabbath friendly also for the emergency call boxes that we have here at the, at the, at the south end of town. So those are our activities and the programs that we put into place as a result of the feedback, great feedback that we've gotten from our residents as it relates to south gate closure.
Thank you, town manager. Lisette, any other additional?
Would anyone else like to speak on Zoom?
Yes, this is Ricardo Casin. A very quick question to the mayor and to the town manager. You just mentioned all the cameras that are being put up on the beach, on the intercoastal, and on Golden Beach Drive. Any additional cameras being put up on the islands? Because when we had a conversation, Alex Diaz said, I don't have a pole to put it. There is now a pole. So I'm wondering if you changed your mind and decided to put a camera on the center of the, of the island?
So thank you for your question, that's an excellent question. So know that as our camera system was laid out, with the exception, of course, of course, of a homeowner objected to allowing us to do it, which a few did, I would say that 98% of our open spaces are now covered under camera, including our waterways, which is the intercoastal, our canals, so all of our canals, intercoastal, canals, Golden Beach Drive, parkways, Ocean Boulevard, and Ocean, Ocean are now covered.
My question is about the, my question is about South Island Drive, Center Island Drive, and North Island Drive, not the intercoastal.
So, so all of our, again, all of our common open areas are covered under our cameras, and there's two on each island that covers those areas.
Okay, I understand that. We had had this discussion, and I had asked or requested to have a camera in the center of each island because it doesn't seem that the cameras on each end properly cover the whole street.
So if you like.
Like I said, there is a pole now in the middle of the island, at least in South Island, and I was wondering if you're planning to put a camera there, which I would thank you for.
Yeah, Mr. Casin, isn't it the appropriate venue for this type of dialogue? So if you'd like, you could schedule a meeting or just come to the TV in person.
Alex, I think it's the exact venue for this type of dialogue. I'm not asking for one camera in front of Center Island, of, of South Island only. I'm talking about everybody's islands, all the residents.
So it's my understanding, okay, and I'll confirm it after, that as the town manager mentioned, 98% of the town is under camera. I know on North Island, when you go over the bridge, there's a camera on that road that watches the, whether someone enters or exits the islands. That's on north, center, and south. Then I know in the cul-de-sacs, there's cameras, and my understanding is that the cameras between the cul-de-sac and the ones on entering the exit the island cover 99% of the islands. But I don't want to say something that's not true, let me, let me check with it.
Would it be possible for me to go and see the new cameras, what they look like on the cul-de-sac?
Sure.
Because I'm telling you, Mr. Mayor, the center of the islands cannot be covered with the cameras on the cul-de-sac. If something happens, somebody gets run over at the, at the, at the intersections of where the, the bridges come into the island, you'll never find that.
Okay, well, again, safety and security is our main concern. Give us, after the meeting tomorrow, I will sit with the town manager and go over the camera situation again, and one of us will get back to you.
Okay, because like I said, at a certain point, they said, it's not convenient, we don't have the poles to put it, but there's a pole now there.
Okay, well, give us some time, and we will get back to you. Again, security is our top priority. So if we can strengthen the security by adding another camera there, if there's a, if there's a blind spot, we will do it. So just give us a day or so, and we'll get back to you.
Second, very quick question, is the, is the IDs that we received, I don't know, some sort of magnetic or whatever, is that what's going to be used to open the gates?
If you recently have, have come in and, and received a new ID, those are your key fobs, so their ID is a fob, and those will open all of the pedestrian gates, gates at the tennis court, pickleball, and the restrooms.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in Good and Welfare?
Would anyone else like to speak?
Yes, my name is Kayla Seiberman, and I'm a resident at 124 South Island. So my question is, when did the town close all of its gates? What year? That we had all of the, you know, Veronas and all of those, I think we have four different exits on, from, on A1A from Golden Beach Drive. When were those exits closed for safety and security purposes?
Let me just give a general statement, because I think that because of a lot of our residents don't actively participate in our town council meetings. So Good and Welfare is an opportunity for the residents to express their positions and give statements. It is not a forum for us to have to answer questions or get into, into back and forth. So that information will gather your requests, and then we'll respond to you in writing. Typically, we don't answer because of south gate, you know, we don't have that, I'm not prepared for that question. So the, the Good and Welfare Forum is for an opportunity for our residents to express their positions, point out their questions, and we'll respond to them in writing.
Okay, so that being said, yes, I'm not familiar with the process, but we have close to 60 residents on our, on our chat that unlike what the mayor said that we're spoiled or whatnot, you know, we, we all have our individual reasons for wanting to exit that gate, and everybody has their own valid reasons, not necessarily just being spoiled or for convenience purposes. So I speak on behalf, like Terry has, on a, a big chunk of us, and we would like to really discuss further, more exit points, not only for South Island, but for North Island as well. I mean, they, I haven't heard anyone speaking on behalf of North Island or their interest in having that extra opening on their end, but there is definitely a big pull and a big need and want or be spoiled of us to want to exit through the south gate, or as an option that our town manager Alex, maybe, you know, we discussed this, that maybe we can open up Verona, that would be a very easy, no cost for, for our residents to exit through that road. And so that's something that we really want to look into. I don't think we're just happy with it, no, it's not happening. We want to hear reasons why, we want to, we want to be able to have that opportunity. And I don't think that just we don't want to, it's not happening, or we're spoiled, is a good enough response for us. We demand, you know, a possible, you know, options. We, we would like to hear options. We even had someone, someone in our chat suggest that we add a second lane, you know, on the, on our south gate to add a north, like a lane on the north side so we could exit and enter, and we don't have to have any issues with golden gates, or just open up Verona, and the equivalent perhaps on the north end. We also have one of our homeowners that said that he's an architect, a builder, a developer, and he said as a matter of safety concerns, it's important to have more than, more than one exit at any given time, and not just when an emergency arises, because sometimes when the emergency arises, it's too late to open it and have everybody flow through traffic. So there's a lot of valid reasons. I think you guys have to really listen to the people.
Speaker, thank you for your feedback, your time has a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good and Welfare? Nope.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Am I allowed, am I allowed to ask one more question that I forgot from before?
It's really not for questions, if you want to.
I mean, a comment, comment, I mean, a comment.
Yes, you can state a comment.
Comment, comment, yeah, it's a comment. I just wanted to comment to see if, and I know I was, Alex responded to me in the chat about the, the amount of boats speeding on the intercoastal that's out of control, and I know, I, I don't know if there's extended time or not that the boats and the weekends, the police presence, and I see them a lot, because in my backyard, I see them a lot, but is there anything else that you guys are considering? I know the state has not allowed to put a no wake sign to lower the boat speed, but just, just so you know that it's a continued problem, because I, you know, once the boat from the police is put away, it's a speedway out there, it gets really crazy. So just to know that, I don't know if you're fully aware or not, if there's anything that can be done to control the speeding boats behind Golden Beach. And the other comment was, and I don't know if there's another committee regarding the beach, and if there's anything that's being done to control who's at the beach for residents, and, you know, kind of controlling who's using our private beach or not. So those are my comments.
Mayor, if you just give me a second, because I think it's important, because, you know, we, I, I love the amount of participation that we're having, and I'd love to see that over 30 people that are on, on the Zoom. I want to make sure that people aren't feeling offended or, or cut off. The reason our Good and Welfare rules exists is we do have a full agenda. So when you hear us say time or cut speaker off, it's not because we don't value your opinion, in fact, we, we'd love to hear it, please send it to us in writing. We're not trying to be rude or disingenuous, the, the reality is, Good and Welfare is set aside for the residents, can let us know what they're thinking with a very limited amount of time, two minutes. So please, if anyone's offended by the time or us seeing like we're just brushing you off, the process is designed that way so that we can keep the agenda moving. We, we'll let 100 people speak, but at the two-minute mic. So I don't want anyone to feel that we're doing it because we're trying to silence your voice, that's not the case. These have been the rules, at least for the 17 years that I've been your manager, and it's just to keep the business moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for Good and Welfare? Okay, with that, we'll move back to the agenda, give council comments. I'll start with Councilman Mendel.
Honestly, I think the mayor and the town manager already covered almost everything, so I just want to welcome everyone back from the summer, and we have a very busy agenda starting, well, starting now, but for next month, I'm hoping that all the participation that we have here tonight translates to next month where we have the budgets. So hopefully, everyone comes and participates there too. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Luskin?
I don't want to belabor too much over the south gate because we've actually talked about it ad nauseam. However, I think with some of the suggestions that the mayor and the town manager put in, modifying the traffic on A1A, modifying the traffic on Golden Beach Drive, the times that we're doing it, I think may make a very significant modifying the traffic on A1A, modifying the traffic on Golden Beach Drive, the times that we're doing it, I think may make a very significant difference in how long it takes to get out of the town. So I think it's workable and we need to give that a chance. I feel a little saddened that everybody got so aggravated and up in arms in the 11th hour of this because the council, if I can speak on behalf of the council, we worked so hard at trying to be open, transparent. The mayor puts out every month after a council meeting what the agenda was and what we accomplished. We put notes, signs out in town on the streets, reminding everybody about council meetings. So we not only try to be transparent, we feel we are totally transparent. So it's kind of, we kind of feel bad that this happens in the 11th hour because we worked so hard at being able to notify and keep our residents posted on everything that we're doing. I will always, whether it's the South Gate, the North Gate, whatever it is, always err on the side of safety. The mayor mentioned this morning in the 11 o'clock meeting that now we have close to 400 kids in Golden Beach.
Over.
And they are running all over town, the north end, the south end. The south end has always been busier than the north end because there's more here. The park is here. The Civic Center or the Old Town Hall is here, the Wellness Center is here. And I just feel that opening up a gate and not being careful before we do anything is just asking for trouble. So I'm going to always err on the side of safety. I'm pleased to hear about the call box. I agree with the mayor or the town manager. Kids don't look when they're out there and people are in a rush in the morning. I'd rather have less opened than more to make sure that everybody is safe. And I think monitoring the foot traffic on the beach has got to be a great idea, and I know that our beach residents must be thrilled about that. Now I'm just going to do a little housekeeping, having nothing to do with the South Gate. And that is, I've had a few people on Ocean Boulevard call me, and I think I shared it with you, chief, that occasionally there's walkers that go up and down, especially the sidewalk on A1A, and they're opening up people's mailboxes and taking their mail. So I'm not sure exactly what the solution is for that, but I think it's something we got to think about. The other thing I want to talk about is there is a piece of equipment that's relatively inexpensive for the police department if they would look into it called LifeVac. Instead of the Heimlich maneuver, it's something you put over either an adult or a child that's choking, push, pull, and it pops it right out. I think it's inexpensive, and I think that it might be something we might want to consider having in our police vehicles. When residents ask me about something, I always tell them I'll bring it up. I don't always know if it's possible. I had a resident call me, we have a lot of electric cars here, and someone asked if we had the ability to put in a charging station that costs a little more. But I think it charges an electric car in 45 minutes or an hour. I don't know if it's possible, but I promised them I would bring it up and share it with the rest of the group. The 400 kids that are on Golden Beach now, there was a time a few years ago, for a long time, I ran something called the Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group. And it kind of fell out of fashion for a while. With 400 kids in the town, I think it's something I'd like to start again. So in one of the newsletters coming up, I'm going to put something in about the youth group. Parents can get involved, and it's a wonderful activity for the kids. Last meeting, I'm not going to go too much longer. I know everyone's in a rush. Last meeting, I didn't get the opportunity to thank Giselle, Michael, and Lisette for always helping me out for Memorial Day or Veterans Day. Last Memorial Day was excellent. They're always there to help me, and I want to thank them. And before you know it, it's Veterans Day coming again in November, which is right around the corner. So thank you all for that. The new motorcycle, I am totally in favor of that. I was kind of, you know, I miss the old ones that we hadn't been using. I'm so glad to hear we're getting another one. I think it's the one way we can get out of town, no matter how much traffic there is or what goes on in this world. The bomb dog is great. Is that the dog that Dylan, our new police officer, has? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. And I think that's it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Turn it over to town manager.
Mayor, as you know, we have the vice mayor on Zoom.
What's that?
Our vice mayor is on Zoom.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Vice Mayor, do you have a comment?
Vice Mayor Einstein, would you like to speak?
Technical difficulties, we'll move on.
Okay, what's that?
We should move on for technical difficulties.
Okay, moving along. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Town manager.
Can you get me?
Oh, now we can.
Hello? Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your comments. I'm not going to address any of that. Because it is budget time, many residents have contacted me during the year, and they said, wow, because our town is getting so much bigger and we're getting so much revenue, more revenue, why is our budget or why is our military not going down? And I just want to address this, that A, I would like all the residents to participate as much as they can in the budgetary process. But we have had preliminary budget books delivered to the council. I've had the opportunity to review it. And I just want to say to the town and to its membership, and from comments that I've heard from people in the town, our primary item that people seem to be concerned with is security. And if they will look at our security, part of our budget and what we spend and how we try to address the security concerns, like tonight, someone mentioned an intercoastal boat speeding. I believe Aventura did not even have an intercoastal patrol. And look how big Aventura is compared to us. We address the security concerns, and that is a primary concern within our town. And if they will look at our budget, if they look how we are spending our dollars, and if they will look at what the manager, what the mayor, and I think what all council people have tried to address. We have tried to be frugal with the town's dollars and how we spend them. The manager, he does not give pens out to his staff. He monitors paper that goes out. We try in a very, very conscientious effort to monitor the spending of our dollars. And I invite the town to come look, look at our budget books, look at how we spend our money if you're concerned, and know that we are trying to address these issues in the most conscientious manner that we can. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Town manager, report, please.
Mayor, members of the council and our residents, thank you so much for such an active participation at the nice meeting. I'm so encouraged by seeing our residents so engaged. I'm going to start off with the budget. As our vice mayor quite eloquently stated, you know, we have been able to lower our military three times over the last just nine years. And although our revenues have increased, know that we continue to do everything to bring in additional revenues. Like the mayor mentioned earlier, just this past year, we've brought in an additional $850,000. Over the last 17 years that I've served as your manager, we've brought in close to $38 million in free grants and dollars to our community. Even though this year's budget did see additional revenues, we have put in place a self-imposed set aside to grow our fund balance, our rainy day reserves. We know that our values can plateau. We know that our values can change at any minute. So know that we don't go crazy on spending. Our next budget hearings, and I mean, this is important. Our first budget hearing is scheduled for September 10th at 6:00 PM here in the town council chamber. And our final budget hearing is scheduled for September 30th here at 6:00 PM in our Civic Center council chambers and via Zoom. I encourage all of our residents to please go online and look at our 210-page budget that goes into detail on every dollar that is spent, all of the programs that we are guiding you on. I get excited on budget night because I get to tell you all of the great things that we do. But if you want to get as excited as I do, please go onto our website and look at our budget. It is a wonderful tool. It does serve as our business guide and our capital plan. I want to let the residents know that we took very seriously the concerns that were addressed in June during the town's flooding. And over the summer, we deployed over six additional pumps throughout the community that have been strategically placed to make sure that we keep our community nice and dry. We've improved our stormwater capabilities and our stormwater response. Know that we hear you loud and clear. When we impact your home, we want to make sure that we try to minimize the impact to you. Know that climate change resiliency is a top priority for us and will continue to do so. And in fact, tonight, there's an item on the agenda that addresses that. As the chief's quite detailing explained, we have continued to increase our police enhancements to make sure that we keep our community being the safest in South Florida. We are not immune to crime. And as you know, we have had some activities over the last couple of months that have asked us to go. I'd like to thank the 30-plus residents that showed up at today's Wellness Center workshop. What a productive workshop where we were able to just hear from our great architect, Mr. Eric Dempsey, and we're going to briefly go over that tonight. Wellness Center is on track. It's important that our residents, you know, as the mayor mentioned, we love the active participation in the group chats. By the way, we're not, the administration is not a part of it, nor do we desire to be. We do like to hear the feedback that we get from our residents. But here's what's important for the residents to know, that when information is put out there and it's not factual, it puts all of your staff in a frenzy because we need to respond, right? So when somebody says that there are 30 immigrants that land in our community, I'm in the middle of Spain on vacation just for five short days, and we're on the phone making sure that we call additional police and define these 30 people because we thought there was only five. Or when we hear people saying that there's sewers on the street and there's no sewer in the streets. So please be cautious in not spreading misinformation. And here's where it scares me as your manager. When I get a phone call from managers from other affluent communities in South Florida, like Bow Harbor and Indian Creek, and I say, Alex, what's going on in your city? It scares me because that means that what's going on in our group chat is spreading like wildfire. And so what I don't want is for a tool that's supposed to be a great avenue for us to communicate to now cause a, well, is Golden Beach still the premier community and wish to live in? And so just be measured. I ask our residents to be measured in how you communicate because it does spill over. Again, I'm for more communication, and we're going to continue to do that. By the way, for those of you who have not signed into Building Links, which does have a chat forum for you to engage each other, and it has a resource library, if you do not sign up for Building Links, you will not be able to reserve our tennis courts or our pickleball courts. Because the reservations of pickleball and tennis and the beach pavilion and North Park and South Park, and eventually the town terrace and the town chambers is all through Building Links. So if you have not signed up for Building Links, please see our Residence Services Director, Mr. Michael Glidden, or Giselle Krep, who works in that department. By the way, when we go live with the tennis courts and pickleball courts, you will need your ID so you could fob in and fob out. We will have a park ranger program initiated as part of our next year's budget. They will add park attendance to make sure that only residents of Golden Beach are using our facilities, especially at night and on the weekend. As part of our Wellness Center program, we're pleased to announce that starting October 1, you're going to see more bootcamp activities to make sure that we're all getting that pre-workout ready for when we build the Wellness Center. So starting October 1, you'll see more bootcamp activities. We're going to be opening up the town employee gyms through bootcamp only to our residents, and that's an extremely important item. I'd like to just remind the community what the new measures that we're doing as it relates to South Gate. We'll be prohibiting parking on Golden Beach Drive prior to 9:00 AM. No garbage activity prior to 10:00 AM on Ocean Boulevard, and no drop-off pouring of concrete. This year is an election year for the town council and for our nation. On November 5 or 7, which is the elections, your federal elections, your polling place is not Civic Center. Please make sure that you go to the Sunny Isles City Hall to vote for this year's November 5 election. We have requested from the Department of Elections to please make this a permanent polling location for all elections for our residents, and we have offered to pay for that so that our residents could just come to our facility and be actively involved in our nation's democracy. As it relates to the town council, our elections are held in February. The qualifying period will be December 30th through January 6. Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to, as I always do, your staff worked around the clock this summer to make sure that we met all of the expectations that our community has set forth. Our executive team, led by myself, your manager, and our assistant town manager Linda Epperson, Lisette Perez, our town clerk, our chief of police Rudy Herbello, and of course, our finance director Maria Camacho, really worked together to make sure that we sharpen our pencils and have a very detailed budget that we're going to be pleased to announce. And of course, all of our director's staff members, Lisette Rivera, Kirk McCoy, who am I missing, Michael Glidden. And of course, all of our staff members have worked hard. I'd like to thank our staff for always making me look so great and for putting our community first. Mayor, that is your manager's report.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we're going to do the committee center, the Wellness Center workshop and update and presentation.
Mayor, and what I'd like to do is introduce Mr. Eric Dempsey, and I'm going to grab the bulls here by the horn and kind of just try to push through.
Give a summary?
Yeah, summary, because we did have an excellent workshop with, like I said, over 30 residents who participated. And I'm just going to kind of put you where we are. So over the last five years, because this process started before we started the Civic Center and when we hired Perkins and Will's to look at the space allocation for our community, let's get that presentation up on the screen. We looked at how can we evolve, and then we asked our residents, would you be willing, so long as we did not increase your military, would you be willing to allow us to take on an additional $7 million in debt so that we can build you a wellness center and make improvements throughout the community? As you know, as part of our reimagined Twiddle Park, after 13 different space allocation and drawing of the city, go to the first one. We, next one, stop. We all agreed and the council voted, and we applied for money from the state, and this is important, to make this the site for our new Wellness Center. As you see there, Golden Beach Drive gets closed because, Golden Beach Drive gets closed because our tot lot and our Wellness Center is being built above the existing town hall location in Golden Beach Drive. Here's the other thing is, we went out to bid, and we said, we want to see who are the best and brightest architects in South Florida to give us a proposed design for our Wellness Center. And after seven committee meetings and two town council meetings, we ended up with Eric Dempsey, who is the architect of record for this facility. And here's what we asked our residents. We asked you through a series of surveys and through public participation to give us what exactly you wanted. And then we said, how can we give them what they want and then some? And here's where we are. So today, next slide. So the proposed Wellness Center is an approximately 11,000 square foot facility that has two tiers. There's a ground level and an above-ground level. Remember, we told our residents that we would be tearing down the children's pavilion in Twiddle Park, or now reimagined Twiddle Park, and making sure that that's incorporated into our Wellness Center design. And here's where we took it one step further. Today, if you have an event, a tot child party in Twiddle Park, it is not a climatized area. By looking at our resources and being able to refocus our efforts, we will now have a climatized space underneath the facility with retractable walls that will allow us to climatize that area. So if you're having a birthday party in the middle of September, you don't have to suffer the Florida climate. In addition to that, on the first floor, by having partitioned walls, we'll be able to have a game space that's, or a community space with TVs, foosball, whatever the equipments are, so that our residents can enjoy. No, you cannot reserve both for a party. We will always maintain the integrity of having our community center open while events are going on. No, you cannot throw, have DJs and have big parties. Yes, the town council will set all the rules. But the idea is that the pavilion that we have in Twiddle Park today, being incorporated underneath the facility, with restrooms that service the outside and Eric, I'm stealing your thunder, but we got to get through this. With a area that we can make sure that facilitates the need of our parks, a tot zone, kid zone, private, so they can crawl, roll, bounce, and not be affected. On the second floor, which is why we decided to go and ask our residents to build a facility for you. Both mental and physical wellness is important to our community. As you can see with Bowie joining our team, on the second floor, we're giving you 37,000 square feet of open space for fitness. We are going to go out to bid and ask fitness companies who actually sell equipment to lay out the equipment. But on the second floor, along the west wall, there's an area dedicated for that private, that quiet area. Let's do Zumba, let's do yoga, let's do Pilates, let's do group dynamics, let's do mommy and me. So there'll be acoustical panels that keep that whole area quiet with a beautiful balcony that overlook the park. Of course, some of you, or some of our residents and our council directed us, could they take a quick shower if they don't want to go wake up their husbands or wives going back to the gym? We have three bathrooms on the second floor with their executive bathrooms with showers. The idea is that the primary focus of the design is give you an amazing Wellness Center that you could cancel your memberships. I won't say which companies because I don't want to get sued. But cancel your memberships. You come to our facility, you can only come with a You come to our facility, you can only come with a fob. It will be staffed during operational hours. The council will decide, can you come in at three in the morning on your own? That's, 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 that's not what we're talking about today. But the idea is, can we give you a beautiful building that gives you more than what you asked for? Remember, saunas, steam rooms, massage parlors have always been off the table. We don't have the resources nor do we have the liability of having those spaces. But by, by being able to provide you a retractable system on the first floor to climatize that party space for our children's parties, I think that you've, we've given you more than what you've asked for. There are limiting factors. This project only has five million dollars allocated for it. Because don't forget, unless I go back one slide? Don't forget, as part of the design, and I'm about to wrap it up, Mr. Mayor, members of the community, part of the design, we still have to set aside about a million and a half dollars for our new tot lot and children's area. Mr. Dempsey, briefly, conceptual ideas, let's go to the renderings. So the residents can see what it actually looks like. Eric Dempsey.
Thank you for that. I think you've done a great job describing the design. And it's been wonderful working with you all about the, not just the function, but also the look and feel. And I think there's no denying that this is going to be a very special gem in a Wellness Center for the town of Golden Beach. And enclosed within this space are all of the functions and requirements that we've been kind of talking to you guys all about to encapsulate them within this very iconic spiral shape, which is reminiscent of a seashell or the golden section. The spaces are all proportional. The, the detailing is very rhythmic and musical. And I mean, it's just a very fun place to be and it's going to be very welcoming to everyone within your community and all of your guests.
So for those who participated this morning, we heard you loud and clear. And in fact, right after the meeting, Eric and I and Paul Abbott, Paul, where are you? Paul, we all got together and said, okay, they liked it, oof, passed step one. Now we've got to go back and tweak it so we can bring something to the City Council for the September 30th meeting. If our council, your council, our council, votes on the design, a schematic design, we will then put pen to paper and actually start drawing it, getting the electrical, mechanical, physical, all the structural to make sure that we can build it for that five million dollars. Don't forget, there was an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar allocation, which will help our budget because that takes care of the civil side because of the site elevations that need to be raised. But the idea is, we've given you a Wellness Center, an additional space that you as a community can come together and gather and civically engage one another for our community. Although this is not the workshop, if there's anyone in the audience or on Zoom that thinks that we've missed something, do me a favor, either state it now or send it in the group chat. Because the idea is, we listened to your surveys. Oh, I forgot one space, go back to the first floor. We even were able to incorporate, let's go back to, leave right there. So surprise, you get two additional things. One, we were able to incorporate a CrossFit type area for CrossFit activity. And we listened to our residents. We will have a paddle, paddle court, padel court in between the existing public works facility and our Wellness Center. So for all the residents who kept on saying, we want paddle, we want paddle, we want paddle, I gave, we gave you, not I, we gave you paddle. So, padel. So, so we were able to do those. So we listened to our residents, we want to make sure that we continue to improve our offerings. And we hope that you enjoy the design. Know that we did go through a process and, and there are several designs that we went with. But this is the, I don't have it here, but if you were here earlier, you would have seen the stack of papers that we have of how many designs. Mr. Mayor, that is our Wellness Center report.
Excellent. I'm just going to, oh, because it's unusual, but does anyone have any comments or questions? Any comments or questions? Okay, thank you. If you do and you think of it, please convey them to the Town Manager, myself, or any of the council. Very exciting. We will be, once again, even more unique community than any other community.
I don't think there's any community in Florida like ours now.
Exactly. Any Zoom comments? Lisette?
Would anyone in Zoom like to speak or make a comment?
Okay.
No, sir.
Thank you. Town Manager, can you go?
Yes, it looks wonderful. Thank you very much, all of you guys, for all your work.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut anyone, anyone else? Excellent. Town Manager, can you give us a project update on CCTV, the Twiddle Park and the pump station?
Super, super excited about CCTV. Just today, we were able to add another five poles on the inner coastal. And we're only missing two on A1A, and I think they're missing like six or seven on Ocean Boulevard. If you have noticed around town, and yes, we know we have a lot of poles and we're going to start removing a lot of the empty poles and we're going to start cutting back our poles and co-locating locations. But if you look around town, there's a bunch of new poles with cameras. The CCTV system is about, I want to say seventy percent in, that's a rough number. We, we, we have been excited. Our CCTV new system has already allowed us to apprehend people, to track people, to actually put out bolos, which is a beyond the lookout notices, but with actual high-res images. So that project is moving quite well. As the mayor mentioned earlier, you know, we are at the mercy of weather. I would have loved to have the tennis courts open by now. Unfortunately, because it has been a very active rainy season, the, the courts aren't quite ready yet. As soon as those courts are dried and we can actually paint the actual surfaces and install the cushion court, those will be going open. The mayor said, Alex, get them open by the end of the month. I said, Mr. Mayor, that's this Friday. We're going to be working as hard as we can to get them open by sometime in the middle of September. And again, it, it, there has been no issues, none. It's just you can't use the acrylic paint on the courts when it's so wet and, or have humidity because then we'll have bubbling and some issues with the courts. And Mayor, as you have noticed, and which has caused all the ruckus, we have officially closed Golden Beach Drive so we can actually begin opening the trenches to install pump station number one, a one point two million dollar project that our residents only paid ten thousand dollars for to make some improvements to pump station number one in Twiddle Park. And so Mayor, that's our project updates.
Thank you. Moving right along, Town Attorney?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Ordinance is second reading, there are none. Ordinance is first reading. Item number one, one item on first reading. Ordinance of the Town Council, amending the Town Code of Ordinances, Chapter forty six, Waterways, Article six, Section forty six eighty one, to allow for repairs, reconstruction, replacement and of illegal non-conforming seawalls.
An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the Town's Code of Ordinances by revising Article six seawalls and dots, Section forty six dash eighty one, extension of seawall into waterways within Chapter forty six Waterways to allow for the repairs, reconstruction, or replacement of legal non-conforming seawalls which encroach into waterway, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
Perfect, I need a motion to approve. I need a second. Okay, Town Manager, house cleaning?
Your attorney.
Summary, or Town Attorney, sorry.
Very briefly, there are a number of homes that have been originally built within the town that are waterfront, that have seawalls, which actually extend beyond their rear property line into the water. Those people who are coming in to replace those seawalls, if you, you apply to replace those seawalls, we have made those people come through a variance to allow an encroachment simply to replace an existing condition. This eliminates that problem and doesn't force somebody to go through several months of a process to get a variance simply to put it back in place at the same location as seawall. So that's what this does. It cleans up a process, it makes a little bit easier on our residents who won't, don't have to apply for a variance for something, which, all of which have been previously approved. So this is first reading. You can open it up for a public hearing, although that's not necessary. Before the second reading, there will also be a, a land development committee or board review of this for consistency with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Any council comments? Close to the council, any public comments? Close to the public, any Zoom comments? Close to the Zoom, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes?
Vice Mayor Einstein? Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Quasi-reducing resolutions, there are none. Consent agenda, the following items are on the consent agenda. Item number two, official minutes of the June 18th, two thousand and twenty four regular Town Council meeting. Item number three, resolution of Town Council approving a joint project agreement with the State of Florida Department of Transportation for turf and landscaping maintenance. Item number four, resolution of Town Council authorizing the purchase of one Ford F-150 for Public Service Department. Item number five, a resolution of Town Council authorizing the purchase of one police motorcycle vehicle. Item number six, a resolution of Town Council authorizing the purchase of a SkyDew X-10 drone for the Police Department. Item number seven, a resolution of Town Council authorizing the purchase of software program to assist the Residential Construction Department with permitting, licensing, and code enforcement operations. Those six items are on the consent agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Consent agenda passes. Item number P, Town Resolution, a resolution of Town Council ratifying the millage, proposed millage rate for two thousand and twenty four, two thou, for year, ending two thousand and twenty four and two thousand and twenty five.
Resolution, a resolution of Town Council, the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, ratifying the maximum proposed millage rate for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five that was transmitted to the Property Appraiser of Miami-Dade County pursuant to the requirements of Florida statutes and the rules and regulations of the Department of Revenue of the State of Florida, providing for an effective date.
A motion to approve? I need a second. So this is, again, congratulations to the Town Manager and the Finance Department, we're keeping, and the council, excuse me, keeping the millage rate at eight point four mils. The assessed millage, the assessed value of Golden Beach is exactly one billion, eight hundred and fifty seven, three hundred and ninety, eight hundred and twenty five million dollars. Okay, that's a, uh, excellent number. So the proposed millage rate for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty four, twenty five are the general operating millage of seven point six six three oh, which is seven point six oh one five last year, point oh six one five increase. Voted debt service, point seven three seven oh, was seven nine eight five last year, a point zero six one five decrease for a total millage rate of eight point four mils. Okay? Any comments, council?
No.
Close it to council, any public comments? Close it to public, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes?
Vice Mayor Einstein? Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Before I go on, I just have to say hats off to everyone that prepared this budget. Yes, our assessed values went up, but our operating costs and probably majority of the people in Golden Beach have their own company or work with companies and understand that in this environment, costs are increasing ridiculously. It, it's beyond inflation. Our insurance costs proposal went up. Our health insurance costs, you know, proposal went up. Our just wages, you have cost of living increases. It's amazing how much expenses have gone up. Our landscaping agreement has gone up. All our subcontracts have gone up, and rightfully so, because they have to pay their employees more. Their costs have gone up. They're not going to take a loss, they have to pass it on. And we as a city, very fortunate that our values have gone up. And we're very fortunate because I can't emphasize the phenomenal job these guys did putting the budget together. Alex and I, we talked the whole summer. He was, been working on the budget for, for over a year. But the last ninety days prior to this, him, the Finance Department, Maria and the Assistant Town Manager and the Clerk have done a phenomenal job. And I urge everyone to grab a budget report and take the time and read. Read my message, read the Town Manager's message. And just even if you look at the summary of the operating cost for Town in Golden Beach, you'd be very, very impressed. And again, hats off to you guys because keeping the millage rate in this environment is a, a true feather in your cap. So, thank you. Moving on, Town Resolution, item number nine, resolution of Town Council accepting the benefit proposal for short-term, long-term disability insurance and life insurance. Town Clerk?
Resolution of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, accepting the benefit proposal for short-term and long-term disability insurance, life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance, submitted by the standard insurance, providing for conditions, providing for implementation, and providing for an effective date.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
A Town Manager, you want to give us a quick summary?
Yep, so Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so as you know, you know, health insurance costs just continue to skyrocket and balloon throughout South Florida and throughout the nation. So I, over the course of the summer, we went out to bid and tried to get solicitation from different brokers to make sure that we offer the best insurance offerings to our employees by providing better plan design and by trying to minimize our premiums. And so working with, we did, we did receive over twenty different type plan designs. We are recommending to you and yes, to our employees, just be aware. I want to recommend Ms. Nunez to stand up. We're going to be recommending that we move all of our business, book of business to Christine, who has been working with the town for many years, because she was able to actually get us, believe it or not, in today's climate, a twelve percent reduction to our premiums by giving us a better offering with United Healthcare. Now, for the employees who wish to get this as a standard program, it is United Healthcare managed by NHP, National Health Partners, which we used to have when I first got hired. NHP was our insurance that we had. Oh, life insurance, sorry, oops, sorry. We're moving from mutual overhaul to standard because it gives us a saving.
Thank you.
Oops, I got excited.
There's a motion.
Thank you, Lisette. Holy K, he's like one of those dogs, wind up.
We, we didn't want to stop him, but we had to.
Slap me. That's what happens when you wear.
So you're, you're on item nine, he was speaking about item ten.
So it happens when you wear a leprechaun suit.
We're going to have a savings and it's a better program, next.
Any, uh,
Item nine.
Not after that.
Okay.
Any public comments? Roll call, please, for item number nine regarding long-term and short-term disability and life insurance only.
Mayor Singer?
Yes?
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, easy there, Tiger. Next item, number ten, a resolution of Town Council awarding an agreement for comprehensive health, vision, dental insurance for the employees of Town and their eligible dependents.
A resolution of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, awarding an agreement for the provision of a comprehensive health insurance plan, including a vision provision and a dental plan for the benefit of the Town of Golden Beach employees and eligible dependents, providing for a condition of award, providing for severability, providing for conflict, providing for implementation, and providing for an effective date.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I need a second?
Second.
Explain, Town Manager, you, you want to babble on?
Picking up where I left off. And so we're going to be seeing a save, a twelve percent savings to the current premiums by getting better plan offerings. By the way, we, we do offer two buy-up options this year. We are switching also from, from Guardian to another carrier, you'll get more dental visits. By the way, so the overall savings to the town is a twelve percent for current premiums and the twelve percent that is in the budget for insurance actually now goes into our reserves. So great job to Christine. And I just want to give my hats off to Elena Chung, who's our HR Coordinator, who really was working behind the scenes and looked at all the plans and get them all together and make sure that people weren't trying to pull wool's over our eyes. By the way, we learned through this process, there are some very sneaky brokers that we will never work with again because of the way that they tried to convince us to go with them. So Elena, working with Lisette Perez, our Town Clerk, who is Elena's supervisor and Maria Camacho really looked together. We believe that this plan design is one of the best plan designs that we've seen. And the fact that we're able to offer premium reductions to our residents by giving them a better program with more offerings, hats off to you, Christine, for all that you do. Mayor, I recommend approval.
Thank, thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Christine.
Open enrollment will be on November 5th. No, September, September 10th, open enrollment will be September 10th.
A roll call, please, or any council comments?
No.
Any public comments? Anyone on Zoom, Lisette, comments?
Would anybody like to make a comment on Zoom?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes?
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Item number eleven, resolution of Town Council increasing the stormwater utility fee.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, increasing the stormwater utility fees effective October 1, 2024, and providing for an effective date.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I need a second?
Second.
Town Attorney or Town Manager?
Manager. Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so as you know, back in 2013, we asked for the council to improve, to increase its stormwater fee for the first time since nineteen ninety seven. And at that time, the administration recommended that we have annual increases to our stormwater fee to continue to meet the needs, the operational cost of our system. After a After a 13-year hiatus and not increasing the fee, we have no choice but to recommend a fee increase to your stormwater. As you know, your stormwater fee is collected on your water bill, we're recommending to go from $50 to $150 a month, bill quarterly, starting, collection will start in the first quarter of 2025, but this fee is needed to help offset the stormwater utility costs and also at the, because of our credit rating, to make sure that we don't have a downgrade in our rating. So this fee is long overdue, and we have been asking the residents, we've been informing residents about this fee for over 13 years, and I recommend strong passing.
Explain to the residents, this will be on their water bill.
Correct. So, so this is collected quarterly on your water bill, the first collection will be paid in the first quarter of 2025.
Excellent. Any council comments on that?
Yeah, I'll just, very quick comment, as we've seen this summer, we need to keep our, our infrastructure very well maintained, especially when it comes to flooding. So this is a unfortunate but necessary step that we need to take.
Right. Some of our stormwater is over 20 years old, and so if we don't maintain it now, we're going to have issues in the future. Any public comments?
Mayor, real quick, I just want to make sure, because I know that our residents and of course, our council, so if you want to see exactly how that fee is going to be paid and how it's going to be used, it's actually outlined in detail in our operating budget, so you know where the costs are.
Any public comments? Any Zoom comments? LaCette?
Anyone on Zoom like to make a comment? Nope.
Nope. Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes?
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. With that, we have some housekeeping items?
No, Mayor, we have item number nine, resolution 2954-24.
I'm sorry. Apologize, totally forgot. Item number nine?
My fault.
I got it.
It was the additional item.
Item number nine?
12.
12, item 12.
Resolution of town, oh.
It's the added item, it's item number 12. It's on a separate sheet.
Item number 12, resolution number 2964.24, resolution of town council of Golden Beach, appointing one trustee to the town Golden Beach employees pension board, on the trustee providing for the terms and agreement on this resolution. Town clerk, you want to read it?
A resolution of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, appointing one trustee to the town of Golden Beach Employees Pension Plan Board of Trustees, providing for a term of appointee, providing for implementation, and providing for an effective date.